Leave, we are still. Actually, a few minutes ahead, so everyone wants to take a break for a couple of minutes while we wait for all of the District Seven candidates who qualified and responded to come on. I think we're still waiting for one. Is that correct, Andy?
Let me find Treeva. She went somewhere. Hold on. Treeva, are you on? Yeah. Okay, great. It looks like we have all three of our candidates, Kathy, so.
I thought there was one more.
Oh, you know, there is one more. Hold on. We're waiting for Clay. Let me see if Clay's on.
And because we didn't take a break, we are a few minutes ahead.
I think we ought to just keep going.
Oh, Aaron's here. Hold on, let me. Great. And if all the candidates could confirm that they can hear us?
Loud and clear.
And also unmute your microphones. Thank you.
Great. Kathy, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to our Alameda County Democratic Party Candidates Forum for District Seven. You will have one minute to provide an opening statement. Then former Mayor Elihu Harris will lead the question and answer period. You have one minute to answer each question unless he wants to give you more time at the front end of the question. And then, time permitting, you will have one minute for your closing. I want to make sure that everyone can, that you're on good view and everyone can see this sign. Please let me know if you can't. All right, so when you have fifteen seconds left from your one minute, you will see a fifteen second sign, and when your time is up, you will see the stop sign. And we will allow you to finish your sentence, so you don't have to cut off mid-sentence when you see the stop, but make sure it's not another fifteen second run-on sentence, or I will interrupt you. Now with that, I will give you former Mayor Elihu Harris.
Hi, good evening. I want to introduce the candidate from District Seven, Aaron Clay, Marcy Hodge, Treeva Reed, and Marsha, is it Tatum or Tito?
Tatman.
Tatman, okay. Tatman, all right, thank you, sir. First of all, District Seven is obviously a very complex district. Much of it is industrial, much of it is poor. Certainly, it is challenged, like many other districts, but in some ways very differently. Again, it's a district that runs from the flatlands to the hills. It is certainly going to be impacted by whatever happens with the Oakland A's, whether or not they stay at the Coliseum site or go down to Howard Terminal. So there are going to be a lot of issues. We're going to try to take them as rapidly as we can, but I hope that you'll be able to give the people who represent District Seven some sense of how you're going to approach, I think, some very complex and challenging problems. Let me start off by asking this question.
If we can first allow them their opening statement?
I'm sorry, I get so excited. Sorry. I'm glad that Ms. Neal's here to make sure that I don't get carried away. All right, let me start. I'm going to start with Mr. Clay. Mr. Clay, I'm going to give you a minute to tell people why they should vote for you and why you're running.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Aaron Clay. I'm running for Oakland City Council for District Seven. I believe this is a crucial election, and we need someone with vision, someone with experience, and someone with courage. The vision to be able to develop community housing, create local jobs and economic base that strengthens our community. We need someone with experience who can hit the ground running and not have to wait two years to learn on the job. And we need somebody with courage to be able to be a real advocate for East Oakland, for District Seven, even if it's unpopular. And that's what my entire career has been about. I've been about providing and developing resources for underserved communities. Raised in Oakland, educated in Oakland Public Schools, I went away, graduated from Morehouse College, received my law degree from Loyola University of Chicago, and I practiced community real estate law. I represented churches, nonprofits, small businesses. I started a community legal clinics for people who couldn't afford attorneys. And I just believe that right now is an important time. We have to redefine how we look at our community. We have to look at it where we control the development instead of the development controlling us and putting us out. So I'm asking for your vote and your support for District Seven councilperson. Thank you.
I will say, Ms. Treeva Reed.
Good evening. My name is Treeva Reed. I'm a lifelong Democrat. I'm an overcomer, advocate, community leader, and I'm running to lead transformative and sustained change in East Oakland. I was raised in a family of educators, entrepreneurs, laborers, civil servants with a deep respect for hard work. My passion to serve now on several community boards, including East Oakland Youth Development Center, SAHA, Satellite Affordable Housing, Community Education Partners, and others, are based on the roots that I grew up in, serving civically, being engaged. Where my great-grandmother's political activism informed our democratic values and working hall hands on deck as the oldest granddaughter of one hundred and twenty-eight grandchildren. I take the fight of my passion, the fight of my upbringing to work to ensure equitable investment, access, economic development, jobs, resources, and policies prevail, with the focus now on ending the gun violence, keeping people housed, building more deeply affordable housing, closing the wealth gap of poverty that we're faced with in this district, and improving economic development and community vitality. East Oakland needs a passionate experience and strong leader with policy experience and professional experience, working and fighting for us at City Hall, and I'm that leader to drive real solutions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Mr. Tatman?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, AC Democrats in the city of Oakland. My name is Marsha Tatman, and I'm running for Oakland City Council, District Seven. I'm a community leader with over a decade of putting myself on the line for the betterment of community. I'm an Oakland native whose career is built on mentoring, teaching, financial literacy, housing the unhoused, feeding those in need by not only being on the front line, but also on the back end, working on policy, advocating at the local, state, and federal level as a government affairs manager who focuses on policy and advocacy. So when we talk about experience, that's me. I pride my life to learn the right way to maneuver before and around government. I have several degrees, being a political science master's in public administration. My platform is reforming OPD, eliminating homelessness, eliminating homicide, and creating affordable housing. Keep in mind, this is things I already done in my career, so I know the way to get it done. And with me as District Seven City Council member, we will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hodge.
Thank you, and thank you again for the open door. It's much appreciated. I'm really glad to be here. My name is Marcy Hodge, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Oakland. My roots in this community, they run deep, and my commitment is genuine. I graduated from Sabrina Park Elementary, attended King Estates Skyline High School, graduated from there, and all of my successes were here in the Bay Area, and I stayed here in East Oakland because I knew that we had so much. I am a, I served two terms on the Prata Community College Board as trustee, and I fought to, there I fought to eliminate waste and redirect funds to classroom. I also fought against the international travel scandal, travel scandal. As councilperson, I pledge to continue my commitment to Oakland by establishing vibrant communities, fighting for, to clean up blight, and fighting for a more robust economic development here in the East Oakland area. Again, my name is Marcy Hodge, and thank you again for this open door.
All right, thanks both. Let's get something, get to something that I think is, you know, pretty universal in terms of the entire city, but particularly District Seven, and that is the Oakland A's. The Oakland A's have been in East Oakland since the late sixties. They are certainly the last major league franchise left in the city of Oakland. They want to move. They want to move down to the Howard Terminal, down, it's the Port of Oakland, near Jacklyn Square. They want to buy the existing Coliseum site on a sole source, no bid competition. I want to know where you stand on the sale of the Coliseum to the Oakland A's, where you stand on them moving at all to the Howard Terminal, and what you believe ought to happen relative to both the Howard Terminal site, if it is not developed by the Oakland A's, or the Oakland Coliseum site, in either case. Talk to me about the Oakland A's, and I'm going to start with Ms. Hodge.
I don't support the A's moving to the Howard Terminal area. I think that it's rife with environmental reports, lawsuits, and everything that would extend their ability to move there in an expedition's manner. I would want, as well as District Seven and certainly District Six, we want the A's to stay where they are. The Coliseum area is already approved for an environmental report, environmental impact report, and there's no reason for them to move. East Oakland needs the A's to remain there, and if they do not remain there, I do not support the selling of the property. It is a public land. It is a public, it would be an asset to the public to either develop housing, affordable housing, or to build an economic engine around that area. So I do not support the A's moving. I support the development of the Coliseum area. I do not support selling, but I would support leasing that property.
All right, Mr. Tatman?
Let me get the facts out straight before I get into my spiel. Howard Terminal, one of the most polluted lands in Oakland, that still have a lot of work to be done, even start to think about developing this area. We got the pollution, the infrastructure issues over there. It's not a good pick. Now, let's look at the Coliseum site. Years of abandonment left us with only one sports team that's hanging on, that's ready to go. I feel we should keep the A's at this site. And when I ran for mayor of Oakland in 2018, I was the only person who had the idea to develop the Hagen Burger corridor as the Hagen Burger tourist zone, not just the Coliseum site. If the A's do leave, I think we should allow the public to pull money together and invest in purchasing the Coliseum site since it's public land, so we can lease it out and develop as Oakland residents and get dividends and have a financial interest in our city. That's the route we should go. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. Let me go ahead to Ms. Reed.
Yes, I support the Coliseum staying at its existing site. I sat at those community discussions with the hope, along with my input and that of many neighbors, for that site to remain, for the A's to remain committed to building and developing and helping to create the economic empowerment that we need in our community. I've led exclusive negotiating agreements for other companies, California Waste Solutions at the Oakland Army Base. I want to bring the experience that I leveraged in working hand in hand with community, community stakeholders at the table, working on community benefits, working through the city's very lengthy process to move from ENAs to DDAs for the type of businesses and the growth that we need to see there. Housing is critical. Building transit-oriented housing is important. We have one hundred and ten affordable homes that we built. Fifty-nine are under construction at the bar. There's more room for growth, for housing, for the entertainment district that's been discussed, for other community services that we need in East Oakland. I fully support it, and I look forward to the city moving into its phase of that discussion with open and transparent discussions as the county finishes the first week of October with their deal.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clay?
Yes, sir. So first thing I want to say is I love the A's. You know, this summer is a different type of summer, and I really miss going to the Coliseum and sitting down on the field and watching the fireworks, you know, laying on your back after the game. So I do miss that, but saying that, I believe the A's need to be in East Oakland. They need to be at the Coliseum site. It's the only thing that makes sense. I worked in environmental space. I have a, started a, excuse me, a solar firm. Then, so I work in that environmental space, and I don't see how you're going to develop on the Howard Terminal site as polluted and as toxic as it is. It's going to be years, if not a decade plus, for them to do that. It only makes sense to be in East Oakland, to stay in East Oakland, and to use it as part of a base to create community benefits. And I don't mean giving it to the A's and then we come back begging for community benefits. We need to, I would suggest leasing part of it for the stadium to be built, but then also putting other parts of it into a community land trust so we can develop affordable housing, mixed-use housing, and housing that provides for all the residents, the current residents of East Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Let's start with Ms. Reed. Tell me what your position is and your theory, your strategy for economic development in District Seven. District Seven, I think, is one of the least economically developed districts. It's got a lot of potential, a lot of land. The airport is there. What are you going to do to bring businesses and jobs into District Seven?
We've got to attract those businesses. I mean, there are opportunities now at the Walmart site. That site, the deal did not go through with a company from Southern California that was looking to develop it. Certainly, it's zoned for auto dealership. We've got to look at how do we rezone different aspects of the district. There are a number of parcels that have come up under surplus land. We need to look at how do we use those public assets to turn those into economic engines in this district to retain, to attract, to invest back into this district for it to be a thriving hub from the east to the west. We've got to support our small businesses that are here. This is unprecedented financial impacts that they have faced. There is a proposal from the Black Cultural Zone that's asking that a hundred million dollars be invested into a community nonprofit grant that can be targeted to the black and brown communities with applications that serve individual small businesses, artists, and entrepreneurs. We've got to bring black ownership back into this district. I would love to see a black-owned bank for those who've been unbanked and underserved in the financial aspect of being able to have loans that help to bring their dreams alive here.
Mr. Clay, same question. What do you think ought to be done for economic development, jobs, small business in East Oakland?
Well, thank you for the question, because this is something that I've worked a lot on. I've done, I've represented cities and counties in economic, large-scale economic development projects. And I think for District Seven, we need economic development that involves community ownership and tangible benefits. We have to have a base for creating equity and wealth in our families, not only for the current residents, but also for our children moving forward. I'm a teacher in Oakland Public Schools, and I hear the lives that our children lead, and honestly, it's just shameful. I mean, they shouldn't have the lives they lead, and we need to do better. So about the economic development, we have different tools that we can use. Opportunity Zones is one of the new tools for economic development, but the problem with that is that you have to control the development coming in, because there is no requirement that the investment from an opportunity zone, which makes up a lot of East Oakland, be community benefits, that it benefit the community. So we have to make sure that we guide that development and we control that development to make sure that it is for the betterment of the community and the people who are here now. So Opportunity Zones, green economy, we have lots of opportunities to do it. We just have to do it and stop talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hodge?
I support definitely a rapid economic development plan. I support looking at industries that are fast-paced and growing, healthcare, biotech, green technology, welcoming in technology, rezoning areas that need to be rezoned so that we can bring in local businesses. Also, we need to look at creating pods. Small is the new big. Since this pandemic, we won't, I don't believe we will see large businesses, the scale that we have seen them expanding at the pace that we've seen them expand with technology, so we can create business offices so that people can come and go and bring in the kind of development and tax base that we need. So we definitely need to support small businesses, welcome in fast-paced, growing industries, and then also looking at rezoning the area along the Coliseum Airport area.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tatman.
Let's make no mistake, D Seven will be a financial juggernaut, not only in East Oakland, but Oakland as a whole. And here's the reason why. Oakland, in particular, D Seven sit on abundant land, right by International Airport. An airport that people fly into and leave straight out the city to go to the world-renowned locations throughout California, which is three hours away. The Hagen Burger tourist home, tourist zone will create jobs. It'll create financial opportunity. It'll create investment opportunity, and it'll give us a chance to tap into this billion-dollar tourist industry right here in Northern California. This will in turn allow us to reinvest back into the city, the East Fourteens, the MacArthurs, so we can have the ability to provide grants or low-interest rate loans for entrepreneurship, so people of color can start to open back up businesses. We need to take Oakland back to its roots, where we was driving the economy with small businesses. Under my leadership, we will.
All right, thank you. Let me, I grew up in the Bay Area, and I remember where East Oakland was the suburbs. And there was nobody black living in them, and I saw between the, in the mid-sixties, when so many people moved out of Oakland, moved into Hayward and Fremont and Union City. And now we're seeing gentrification coming back in Oakland, and there's a resurgence and a change that has not only changed in the demographics of District Seven, but the economics of District Seven. Here's what I want to ask you guys. Tell me what you think ought to happen relative to the gentrification of District Seven? What you believe ought to happen relative to affordable housing, workforce housing? What do you think we need to do to retain District Seven as a diverse district that represents what Oakland has been in terms of a sense of culture and a sense of being for so many people, particularly those who are African-American? And I'm going to start with Mr. Tatman, and then I'll move down the line.
Thank you. In order to protect the culture and bring back the history of Oakland, we have to protect our most valuable asset from being displaced, and that's African-Americans and people of color, people who actually helped build this city. Now, the only way to do that is we need to create a path, not only to cheaper, affordable rents, but homeownership, because once you own land, you own it, and no one can kick you out. This need to be a focus of D Seven in terms of keeping people in long term. Now, in order to address this crisis we're dealing with right now, of course, we need to bring the rents down and create affordable, livable wages so people can support and sustain their families. That's the issue. We need economic development to get that done and bring income into the city of Oakland so we can start paying our residents to remain living in Oakland. And as far as bringing people back to Oakland, we need policy that put priority ahead of anything so we can stop the process of gentrification.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hodge?
Yes, I would say that the first part, the only way to combat that is to create jobs, whether you have a college education or not, but that people have jobs that have a living wage is the first way to combat that. Again, increasing the affordable housing. We're in a place where we're pretty much landlocked. We have some parcels, but we need to ensure that the properties that we are building out for affordable housing, that we need to increase the percentage beyond the seven percent. Again, we need to be at thirty percent of affordable housing, and we need to ensure that we are invigorating and creating more jobs and opening up the door and not making it so difficult for businesses to open. I'm in the process of opening up a second business, should be employing twelve people right now, but I'm tied up with the fire department and a fire clearance. These are living wage jobs that should be available for people to apply for and to be hired. So we need to make Oakland much more friendlier towards small business.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Reed?
Yeah, East Oakland is one of the most impacted areas, as you've been sharing, in the city, where we have the greatest number of residents evicted and displaced. You've heard the data, seventy percent of people here that are unhoused are black, and the majority of those are black men, and so we've got to have some priority programs and attention to those who have been most harmed in this housing crisis and who have the greatest need. We've got to work to continue to pass and enforce existing tenant protections to keep East Oakland residents permanently housed. We've got to break the wealth gap and make sure that they do have families sustaining living wage jobs to be able to keep their rent, their mortgage paid. We've only achieved fourteen percent or nine hundred and forty-five units of our affordable regional housing goals since 2015. Yet, we've exceeded the moderate housing goals by a hundred and sixty-eight percent. That is not equitable. And so we've got to fight to ensure that we've got equitable housing policies and goals. We've got to fund the community land trusts to keep people housed. I work on the board for SAHA Affordable Housing, and we advocate at the local, the state, and the federal housing for low-income tax credits, for affordable housing, tax abatements, and other measures with our regional partners to keep people housed permanently in our district.
All right, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, so talking about gentrification, we need the jobs, we need the housing, but people talk about affordable housing. We have a lot of people, and they're not all the same, so we need to provide resources for those people. So we need transitional housing. We need supportive housing. We need housing that's affordable for working-class people. We need more workforce development. We should be helping our teachers, our police, our firemen purchase properties in the community that they can afford to keep those people here. And as far as the jobs, we are in an area of some of the greatest inequality between East Oakland and between Silicon Valley, and we really need to address that. By having partnerships, we have land, we have warehouses, light industrial warehouses in District Seven, and we can address that by developing pipelines to help supply some of these vendors. Tesla needs like a thousand different parts, sheet metal and different things that, these are pipelines of work that we could develop as living wages, union jobs for our community, for the people who are here right now, and it's important that we do that. And that's also why the community, the Coliseum land is so important, because we need land. Land is important. We have to keep our land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's talk about homelessness.
And we probably have time for one more question before the closing.
Really?
Yeah, it went fast.
All right, well, actually, I wanted to, I'm going to take a double, just to, we started a little early. We've got four candidates. I want to go a little bit more.
All right.
Two questions. One, first question, homelessness. Where, if you believe that there ought to be homeless housing in East Oakland, A, and you support that, where in District Seven would you put homeless housing? Now, I'm going to start with Ms. Reed.
Well, right now, we have hotels that have been made available and funded through the county. I think that is a temporary housing solution that we can take advantage of while that funding is available. We have the FEMA trailers. While those are not desirable places to have families stay forever, that is temporary housing. But there's available land at the Coliseum. There's a hundred and twenty-plus acres there that we can develop. As has been said, the environmental review has already been completed. There's already a Coliseum-specific plan that's already been passed for us to invest in housing at that transit corridor. We've got multiple modes of transportation there, and so I believe that the Coliseum area is a critical area that we can invest in. We've got to convert any vacant buildings around that area that housing can be made available for those who need safe shelter, safe temporary shelter, and most importantly, permanent housing now.
Mr. Clay?
So homelessness, housing in particular, is something that's pretty close to what I believe in. I believe that everybody should have housing. I mean, I think everybody should have a bed protected by a sheltered roof. Everybody should have a place to shower and use a bathroom with some dignity and have running water, a place to store food and cook food for themselves and their families. So saying that, people are different places in their lives, and although they may not have a firm shelter over their head, some may need different resources than the others. So we have to have different types of housing, transitional housing, you know, supportive housing, where you provide the mental health resources, career development, just basic job development, help people get on their feet. So these things don't have to be concentrated, you know, we've shown concentrated poverty doesn't work. So we don't have to stack them all in one place. We can have different scattered sites for housing for people who need different resources, whether it be families with children, single mothers, whether it be veterans, and make sure that we have that network and that resource for them to thrive and provide it so they can move to the next step of their life.
Say, Mr. Tatman? Sorry about that. So Oakland need an all-out blitz right now. I'm the housing guy who spent a lot of time in my career with building futures for women and children as their homeless outreach manager, housing the homeless. I spearheaded the Emergency Winter Warmth Shelter, in which we provided over a thousand beds to people needing a roof. So when you talk about somebody knowing this issue, this is my issue, my number-one issue, and it's always been. We need to make sure we use every tool in the tool book to get this done. I was out there two years ago at five in the morning, where most people can't say that, doing a homeless count, where we counted over four thousand people sleeping on the ground in one of the most richest, fifth-biggest cities in California. in one of the most richest, fifth biggest city in California. It's unethical and it's unright, any available land we need to build. We need to get rents down and get people in because there's vacancies around. We just need to supply the resources to get people housed and rapid resources and wraparound services.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Hodge?
Yeah, I would say that while we have the homeless in hotels, which the state funds and the county manages, I would say that we would look at, in the industry that I am in, is residential programs. We have a lot of group homes that have closed, who can offer support services off the ground. And so we need to look at RFPs for owners, business owners, who can switch their programs to support homeless individuals. I find, as a psychologist, I am a Dr. Hodge, I find that people who are in home-like environments can thrive much better. You can identify the mental health needs, the physical needs that many individuals deal with and work to transition them into their individual supportive, either returning them back to family where they can be supported or transitioning into housing. So I think we need to look at a robust plan and look at utilizing many of the industries that are already in place that are looking at shutting down or transitioning to something else. And I think that's the way that we can kind of combat homelessness and then really work to get people back on their feet.
Ms. Reed?
I answered it. I'll take some more.
No, that's fine. I lost track. I want to make sure I got to everybody. All right, my last question.
Yeah, I said you could probably do another question. You have time.
Oh, thank you. My last question. The city of Oakland is faced with tremendous budget deficit. This year, they used some trickery, in my opinion, to balance the budget. It's going to get worse next year. What will you do or how would you propose to balance the budget? What revenues would you seek to increase? What would you cut in order to balance the budget and keep the city functioning on a reasonable basis? And I'm going to start with Ms. Hodge and go down the line.
Yeah, I would definitely, the first thing is to keep employing Oakland employees. We don't want to look at cutting them because they invigorate the tax base. What I would look at is asking the city to support a, you know, quarter over percentage, you know, tax increase, sales tax increase. So looking at those type of areas where we can try to increase the sales tax revenue. Again, bringing in businesses that can support and give back to the sales tax. And these are different ways that we have to look at invigorating the economy and building up those reserves that will be used during this.
So you would not cut anything, man?
There are certain items that you can cut, but I wouldn't want to cut, you know, you know, anything that has to do with anyone working for the city of Oakland because we've got to keep Oakland going. Not only that, if we're cutting them, you know, many of those employees live in Oakland. They feed into the tax base and sales tax.
That's why I just want to be clear, give you a chance to clarify the issue. All right, Mr. Tappan?
I sit on a budget as the budget commissioner. You also talking to the son of a city and Oakland employee for over 40 plus years through Parks and Recreation Center. I read the reports and I see what's going on with the budget. But one thing I want sacrificed is our city workers' hours. I want farload. I won't do anything like that. I remember two years ago around Christmas time, when it was done to my father and the stress it put on the family because he couldn't go into work to get those hours. Everything is interconnected with economic development and not putting all our eggs in one basket in a real estate market. Because as we about to see, this real estate market is not about to perform as it's been performing in the past 10 years. It's about to be a complete flip. So we need to get ahead of the storm. And we need to create those entrepreneurship opportunities to give people businesses so they can start generating income for the local community in turn with increased the sales tax receipt. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Reed?
Yes, I've fortunately had the opportunity to manage multimillion dollar budgets as well as generating multimillion dollar sales revenue and growth. I'll bring that experience and leadership into this role and tackle these budget issues. But I support reallocating funding from OPD. That's a critical area that we can look at where we take funding from within the current budget to address those critical programs that we have a need for seniors, youth, fire prevention, library services, and certainly sustaining our employee jobs. I support the proposed progressive business tax measure that's coming out in 2022. I support the Uber tax increase. I support certainly passing the billion dollar funds that we can get through Prop 15 for schools and Community First back into our community. I support Assembly Member Bonta's wealth tax through AB 208 that will tax the taxpayers with a net worth of 30 million. So I support a number of different measures that we can lead locally. And I also realize that the appellate court just approved the lawyers paying us back the $40 million outstanding. We've been paying towards that debt, $11 million annually. That is now $11 million that we can put back into the general fund to help support our programs, our services and our people.
Thank you very much. All right, I think Mr. Clay has left.
Yes, sir. The budget, you know, people think the budget's very complicated, but the budget is just a document of our priorities. And I think a lot of our priorities are in the wrong place. We spend more than any other major city on our police force, about 41%. Baltimore spends 26%, Chicago spends 38%, LA spends 26%. We spend four out of every $10 for the police. And although I didn't do criminal law, I did use to talk to public defenders and they used to tell me how police would game the system. And they would have arrests around five o'clock because that would give them three hours, extra hours of overtime. OPD has exceeded their overtime budget by over $13 million for the past four or five years. And that's ridiculous. That's money that should be going other places to housing, to mental health services and to help people live instead of just survive. So I think that we need to look at all of our budget. We shouldn't cut city workers unless it's somebody trying to game the system, which we do have in our budget. But it's just a matter of priorities. It's what do we want to pay for and how much do we care about helping our people?
Thank you very much. All right, I believe, okay, I think, is that it? I think we exhausted that question. Now it's time to close. You just have about a minute. Ms. Neal, anything else before we close?
No, I can't think of anything.
Okay.
I think we're going to each person has a one minute closing. And remember, I will not cut you off mid-sentence, but please, if you see the stop, just wrap up your sentence.
All right, so I'm going to start, I'm going to do these more in alphabetical order and I'm going to start with Mr. Clay.
So my name is Aaron Clay and I'm asking for your support and your vote for a better District Seven. I live, work and volunteer in East Oakland and walking around, driving around, working. I just see people trying to survive the best way they can and we need to change that. It's time to elect somebody with vision and experience so that the residents of East Oakland, our current residents of East Oakland can thrive and have the resources they need to live the lives that they deserve. D seven is a strong community with amazing culture and history. And this election is crucial to determine the future of what District Seven is going to look like. Now is the time we have to start moving forward, start cleaning our streets, start building housing that working people can afford and start creating an economic base that provides living wage jobs for our families. We need an advocate who will strengthen our community, who will create a foundation for building community wealth that current residents and children can benefit from instead of having those resources sold or diverted away from the district. If we don't change the current course, we'll lose a lot of our long-term residents who lived here all their life from foreclosures, evictions and affordable and inaccessible housing. We need to do more to improve the conditions for our current residents. My name is Eric Clay. I'm asking for your support to create a better District Seven. My website is clayforD7.com. Please visit.
Very much. Thank you, Clay. All right, Ms. Hodge?
Yeah, thank you again for the open door. Again, my name is Dr. Marcy Hodge and I would definitely be honored for your vote for District Seven. My proven track record and education provide me with the expertise I need to represent and be responsive to you. My unwavering belief that our city can realize its greatest potential has propelled me to seek the office of Oakland City Council, District Seven. Our families, our safety and our community are of paramount importance. I take your time very seriously and I take your vote very seriously. I have served you for eight years as the Peralta Community College trustee. My brother Jason Hodge, who served also two terms on the Oakland Unified School District Board for two terms. We believe in serving. We believe in serving the city because we love the city and because the city has given so much to my family. Again, my name is Marcy Hodge and I would seek your vote for Oakland City Council District and it will be taken very seriously. Thank you.
Then Ms. Hodge, Ms. Reed?
Thank you for your time. I'm Treva Reed and I'm running the lead transformative and sustained change here in our district. I believe engaging with community is priority to advocate for courageous progressive policies, equitable outcomes that empower East Oaklanders and Oaklanders and small businesses to thrive by helping to strengthen our community benefits, our local higher goals, our labor apprentice programs to ensure that there's access and equity, investments and resources that should be equitable with transparent outreach programs to partner with schools and organizations and raising up a workforce that really helps to create, offset the wage and wealth gaps that we face. Beyond my passion, my leadership experience, having worked within Assembly Member, now State Senator Nancy Skinner, I worked for workers' rights protections, housing policies, gun violence prevention, job training programs, legislation for incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals that benefited our neighbors here in East Oakland. I face this economic crisis, ready to take on the issues before us with wisdom and sound judgment, advancing progressive values to ensure equitable investment access and resources. East Oakland needs a passionate, experienced, democratic, strong leader that's fighting for us at City Hall, working to deliver real solutions. I hope that you would join leaders like Senator Nancy Skinner, Assembly Member Rob Bonta, our Oakland firefighters, the Sierra Club, Building Trades, our Labor's 304, many community leaders like Ms. Cheryl Walton, Pastor Michael McBride, to help lead East Oakland forward now. You can stay plugged in at ReedForOakland.com and follow me on social media. Thank you for this time and I hope to have your endorsement.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Mr. Tappan?
I just want to be on record by saying this because this is a critical issue. I do support defunding the OPD. I miss that. And let me tell you why I'm running for District Seven. My whole life, I've seen the disparities, the inequities, the lack of care for D seven, the closing of businesses, the loss of hopes, the dirty streets, potholes, crime, a lack of focus, innovation and energy. This is nothing new. You start to ask yourself, is this by design? We're at a crossroads. Not only are we being tested physically, my whole life I've seen the disparities, but we also being tested mentally. We need to vote more shine so we can move on with new leadership in District Seven. And that's what I will do as your city council member. Please check out my website at votemarche.com and vote Marche number one on the ballot this November. Because I'm a person who will move Oakland onward within District Seven. Thank you.
All right, thank you y'all very much. Let me just say that all of you are very impressive candidates. We're lucky in District Seven to have candidates such as yourselves. I'm very impressed with what you've had to say, your earnestness and your creativity. And it's a rapid questions, hard questions, but you guys stood up under fire. Nobody folded, nobody wilted, nobody quit. So that's what we need and we're looking forward to one of you emerging as a council member to represent us in Oakland. So good luck in the campaign ahead. Certainly we thank everyone who participated tonight in these council forums. These are very critical issues facing our city as we're facing the national crisis of leadership. We certainly hope that we'll find the leadership that we need in Oakland among the candidates we've heard tonight. So let me thank you very much. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Neal to close out. But again, I think it's been a great forum with great candidate and again, great opportunity for the future of our city. So Ms. Neal, thank you very much for allowing me to participate in this candidate forum.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Alameda County Democratic Party, we'd like to thank former Mayor Elihu, former Mayor, Assembly Member and Chancellor Elihu Harris for serving as our moderator. It's been a long evening and he's, I think, done a great job. So we really appreciate that you volunteered to do this. I think you'd also like to know that we had almost 300 people who streamed this live on Facebook. So proud of the reach and everyone, please, if you are not registered to vote, remember to register and vote as early as you have made a decision on who you would like to vote for. It is more critical this year than it has ever been. And again, thank you and good night.